Okay, well, we have a one, two, three, four, five. When Ilda, when Ilda comes back, we'll have a quorum. I don't see Mark or Jaime. Mary has a family obligation tonight. So she was not, she was thinking she probably won't be joining us. And Lisa is still on leave. So we do have five of us at least, we can get started soon. As soon as Ilda gets back in the screen, or Jaime, or Mark join, are either one of them on? Don't see them.
There she is.
Well, there's Ilda, okay. So Ilda's back, we have a quorum of five of the board members, as I said earlier. One of our board members, Mary, has a family obligation this evening. And Lisa is still on leave. So we'll convene the meeting at 7:01 PM. And it's nice to see everybody. Sort of tired of seeing everybody in little boxes, but I think we're gonna have to get used to this for the foreseeable future. So welcome, everybody, tonight. It's our November board meeting, it's on a weird night for us because of Veterans Day last week and Thanksgiving next week. So we're meeting the same night that the Board of Finance meets, which we usually try not to do. We have a delegation of Rita and Neil representing us at the Board of Finance meeting tonight because they're going to be hearing from the auditor. So it should be an interesting evening over there. You can tell I was the form on that committee before I find auditors meetings interesting, but um. So we'll open it up to public comment, is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Either indicate in the chat or unmute yourself and identify yourself, please.
Can I make a comment, Lynn, even if I'm not part of the public public?
Yes, sure, and then we're gonna, Nicole Bay would like to speak next, so go ahead, Katina.
I just wanted to congratulate the staff, Wyndham staff today for doing Wellness Wednesday. They started this amazing program today, I can see some of you were there. And I participated where it's focused on the wellbeing of the teacher and the staff member. And it was really well organized and touching. So thank you for inviting us and also for doing it.
Thank you. So Nicole, you can unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Bay and I'm the STEM coach at Barrows. I'm also a parent of a student at North Wyndham School and I live in town. So the first thing that I want to say is, I want to put out how much I appreciate all of the hard work of our leadership team at the building and district level and having to make some of the toughest decisions that anyone has probably ever had to make in any time ever, as far as education is concerned. And I want to go on record as saying at the beginning of the year, I was hardcore, get all the kids in, we need them in school, they're safer there than anywhere else. We're gonna follow, you know, everything that we need to do to keep our kids safe. They're gonna have masks and they're gonna be socially distanced, but they're safer in school and we can do so much more to improve their education and their emotional wellbeing if they're here with us. Unfortunately, circumstances have made it that that's not possible. And again, hats off to the people who have to make those decisions, I'm glad it's not me. But I do want to say that now that we've had the transition from hybrid to virtual and back to hybrid and then to go to virtual again, that puts a whole new layer of, I don't even want to say inconvenience, of just heartache and absolute distress on everyone. And when I say that, I mean that as a teacher, I mean that as a parent, and I mean that as an observer of my poor child who is struggling with this. So what I'd like to say is that I'd like for us to consider where possible and when possible to sticking to one of those modes for longer than a couple of weeks. I know the decisions have been tough, but to be here for two weeks with our students hybrid, hybrid is challenging enough. And then to go virtual, the kids make that transition and then it's, okay, great, we've got that under our belts, let's come on back now. And so we make that transition and then now we've got that under our belts and guess what, we're going back out again. So as it seems that it is very necessary for us to go virtual again for everyone's safety, although I wish that weren't the case, I support what's best for all of us. But I would like for us to maybe consider, or not for us, but for the board to consider having us stay out until the holiday break, because if we don't stay out until after the holiday break, that's another two weeks of virtual and then two weeks of hybrid again. And it's just transition after transition for our students, for our teachers. And we're all kind of losing our minds a little bit with this and we're doing the best we can and I think we're doing a fantastic job. Kids are learning, kids are feeling safe. But every time we throw a monkey wrench into these plans, it becomes harder and harder for us to keep our sanity and to stay strong for our kids. So I hope that there will be some conversations about how to keep us in some mode of education that will be able to be consistent for a while so that we can really get good at doing one thing as opposed to trying to do everything in two week spurts. But like I said, I don't want to take away from the decision makers, I think they're doing a great job and I can't imagine how difficult that is. And I appreciate all of the thought and the tough decisions that go into making sure that the staff and the students are safe and well educated. Thank you.
Thank you for those very thoughtful remarks, Nicole. And I see that Kristin DeGray did owed your, seconded your comments in the chat. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Just unmute yourself, identify yourself. Okay, we'll come back to public comment at the end of the meeting. And people will have a second bite at the apple if they'd like to speak up then. So the next thing on the agenda is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes for October 28th. They'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move, Tracy.
Tracy seconded by Ilda.
Either way, yeah.
And is there any discussion on those minutes? If not, then I'd ask Janet Testa, please, to take a roll call vote.
Sorry, too many mouths going at one time. Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
Has Dr. Gomez joined us?
No, he says he needs the link, I'm just texting him now.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Can I give a thumbs up? Thank you. Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Ms. Cabo-Noren.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. On to superintendents' reports. And would people mind if I ate a little power bar while we're hearing from the superintendent? Thank you, I just haven't had dinner. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody, I'm gonna share my screen here so you can see the start, our first presentation on the district celebrations. Can you see my screen? So funny, the double screen thing throws me off every time. All right, there we go. Okay, so the first thing, we want to let everyone know that the district did still celebrate Veterans Day, even though it looked a little different this year. Because obviously, school was closed and even if it was open, it would look a little bit different because of all the other mitigating strategies we have to keep in place, but we did make sure we celebrated our veterans. The Storyline, which many of you are familiar with, one of the local arts programs that is run in our town regularly, has put together a little video, I, it's not included in this presentation, but I will send it to the board members and we'll post it on our website so everybody can see. It's about four or five minutes long and I wasn't sure we were gonna have the time tonight. But it's all about the partnership that exists between Storyline and Wyndham. So it's a, it's an adorable video that I will share with everyone, but I wanted to just celebrate the fact that we are, they've, they've watched these little guys grow from Nachog School to the high school, so it's been something that's been in place for a while. So we'll, we'll share that video with everyone. We received another generous donation at Wyndham Center School, you can see the books there, that they are on the buddy benches, which you can see the little kiddos in their tiny little masks sitting on. We appreciate the donations. Another donation from Eastern. Wyndham High School honored Dr. Tom Campo, as you know, who was the school psychologist who passed away suddenly last month, and they named the kindest day after him, so they put together a really nice tribute for him, which I thought was really touching. There's a picture of our flu clinic being run, looks like the high school. Seventy individuals vaccinated, so obviously, that's really important given where we are in terms of public health right now and COVID. The more people have their flu vaccine, the better off we are. We, we appreciate the support from our local health district and all the support that our nursing team has given, get that done. The before and after school staff dressed up for Halloween and handed out COVID care packages and some candy to the after school, for and after school families. I see the Incredibles there.
In the snow.
Yeah, it was raining, it was snowing that day, which is unusual, but it happened. Again, we're celebrating the before and after school staff, as well as the supervisors who have been able to provide us supervision at the satellite school that we put together for our employees. This program allows employees who have children who are not in school because of the hybrid model, which again, is not a sustainable model, we're well aware of that. But this program allows them to have free childcare and we're appreciative of their support, keeping that going. This is a picture, a screenshot of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee that the district is, has started or restarted because it's been in place for a while and put it back in place. So you can see it, a wide range of district staff members taking part in that exciting work. We are pleased to recommend the following Wyndham High School students for the 2020 United States Scholars Program. Isabel Perez, Pascal Phillips Scalucci, and Owen Delgado-McKenna. So we congratulate, celebrate those students for their great work. I know, can you clap, I see Katina clapping in her little box. And that is it for the district celebrations.
Is there anybody on the board who wants to ask any questions or make any comments? It's always nice to be reminded of all the good things that are happening, especially now when it's so hard, so.
And a celebration, I'll tell Laura, Laura, I don't know if Laura is on, oh yeah, I see she's on this call because she has continued making the beautiful presentations for us to celebrate with you each month.
Thank you, Laura.
You want me to go on to the next item, Lynn?
Sure, I don't see anybody raising any questions, so.
All right, hopefully, everybody can see my screen, I can never tell, so.
Yes, we can, we can see it, it's there.
Perfect. Okay, so sort of three objectives, I want to bring the Board of Education up to speed on the latest COVID-19 information and its impact on district operations. I want to hopefully help everyone understand some of the staffing structures, struggles we're experiencing that are only exacerbated by COVID. And I want to definitely celebrate and shout out to our staff members who have, really have been functioning as essential employees through this whole nightmare of, of the start of the school year in our efforts to offer in-person learning. So as each of you on the call knows, last night, I made the call to close down for approximately two weeks due to an increased number, pretty significant increased number in positive cases and some staffing, real staffing concerns in terms of being able to make sure that our classrooms are covered. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that in the presentation, this is just a little calendar that shows tomorrow, the high school moved to virtual learning and that was necessary, given the number of staff members who, who are not available to cover classrooms right now. I'm gonna show you a little example of Monday's attendance, which has absolutely nothing to do with COVID and what they needed to do just to cover classrooms on Monday. And a similar example of the same kinds of things is happening in each of our buildings across the district. And so COVID only adds another layer to that. So this is just a little calendar, again, all the other schools will move to virtual learning on Monday, the 23rd, and remain there till December 4th with right now, projected return to on-campus learning for, oh, I see a typo, they should say the 7th.
Yeah.
Fix that quickly, huh? Let me stop this and fix that and then I'll put it back up. And it's not letting me do that, so I'm gonna just go back.
It's okay, well, we'll take your word for as long as Claire Galvin doesn't report that. Because I know she's on the call.
Make sure I know.
Doesn't report that we're going, that we're, that we're having virtual learning and going back to on-campus learning on the same day.
Look at that, and I built a time machine because I'm gonna have us have the same date on Friday, the 4th, and Monday, the 7th. So I will fix that typo, I'm sorry about that. Lots going on here. Any questions on this so far? Okay, all right, so here are the latest quarantine and isolation numbers for the district. Actually, they're down significantly from yesterday because many, many of our students came off of quarantine. But you'll see, there's a fair amount of, again, there's another typo in my presentation, I'm so sorry, I'm just not on my game tonight. So the student quarantine numbers are 37 total students, nine of which are virtual students, meaning they don't come into campus. Thirteen in isolation, seven of those are virtual students, and that is important information because we're reporting out to the district that we're being notified of positive cases. But not all those positive cases impact the learning community, so I, I want to make sure that's clear. If a student doesn't come to school, they're not technically impacting the learning community. It still makes us nervous that we know that the community spread is out there, but that's, but they're not impacting our schools. We have 17 staff members currently in isolation, currently in quarantine, excuse me, and 15 in isolation. I've given you the definitions from the CDC of quarantine and isolation. Any questions? All right, so some of the staffing struggles that the district is experiencing aren't really.
I think, I think Jaime has a question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the previous slide, could you go back, please?
Sure.
So you say that 37 students, okay? So 28 are in quarantine and nine are virtual?
No, no, 37 students total, nine of which of those 37 are virtual-only students.
So the other 28, what are they doing? Where do they quarantine?
No, no.
At their houses.
I mean, they're, they're hybrid students who are in quarantine versus those who are fully virtual in quarantine.
Okay, they're hybrid there.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so some of this, some of these struggles that we're having from a staffing perspective relate to the fact that we're still working as a district on getting an equitable staffing structure so that every school has the same number of staff members based on their student enrollment, we're still working on that. We know as a district that our certified staff numbers are well below the state average. We have fewer certified staff members than we should have based on our student population. We also have more non-certified staff members than we should have when you compare us to the state average, which puts us in a dilemma, when we have certified staff members absent, we have fewer to choose from to cover those classes, so we have to go to non-certified staff members, which doesn't necessarily mean that we're getting the students what they need. We have, although it's not a large number, we do have some staff members who have health-based accommodations and are not able to come to work in person. We put back into, using CARES Act money, we put back in to our schools budgets, building substitute and district substitutes. We have worked with the unions to ensure that non-certified staff members can cover classrooms. We've provided to each of the principals a substitute hierarchy, who do you choose first, who do you choose second, third, fourth? In the event you have to cover your classrooms. And we continue to rely on outside agencies, Kelly Services, for example. And we, we've even asked to expand some of those outside agencies opportunities. Unfortunately, getting substitutes during a pandemic is not something that's easy to do, every school system is struggling with this. Some school systems have layers and layers of staff members to go to to cover classrooms. Our school system is not like that, most especially in the certified staff department. We are, we don't even have as many as we should have based on our student enrollment, which again, we're working on. But I just sort of putting this out there that this is contributing to our staffing issues. So here's an example from Monday, the 16th. Well, first I'll start off with the staffing update as of the 16th. We pulled a report to see how many sick days were being filed. These are sick days, not, not necessarily contributing, not necessarily connected to COVID. 307 certified staff absences as of the 16th of November. A hundred and one of those requests didn't require a substitute, so it was someone that didn't have a classroom or perhaps they already put in to use their building sub, but they didn't need to have a sub provided. So that leaves, that leaves 206 opportunities for a sub to be provided. Of those 206 opportunities, 150 went unfilled. We did not get a sub for 150 requests. We received a sub for 56 of those requests, which is 27%. So everyone needs to understand, before we even throw COVID into the mix, we have an issue with covering our classrooms. So there's an example from the high school. On Monday, there were eight staff, eight certified staff absences, which had nothing to do with COVID. These are just regular absences, people don't feel well, they have doctor's appointments, whatever are the reasons you don't come to work normally. These are not COVID-related absences. Two of those absences were related to PD and we did have a sub secured for those two. The principal then used the ISS tutor, the job coach, the bilingual tutors, the athletic director and the special education teacher to cover the other six classrooms. So exceptional example of teamwork, love that she was able to pull that off and keep body in each of the classrooms. But clearly, the, the people that were placed in those classrooms cannot provide the level of service to those students, they're not certified to do that work. So we end up impacting our students, the student supports and services we're providing without even talking about COVID. So it's a very real issue. So now, if you add to this, the potential of staff members having to quarantine or having to be isolated, you're just putting us further and further behind in being able to cover our classrooms. So when I mentioned yesterday in my all-call that there's some real staffing struggles across the district, it is the truth, it is the truth, there's a real staffing struggle across the district. Some of the schools are in better shape than others, but none of them are in great shape.
I have a question, Tracy. You know, how do these staff, if, if we didn't have COVID happening?
Yep.
And we had these, this number of staff app, is, do they, does that compare to an average year for staff absences when we get into the colder months, 307?
So I didn't pull data to see where we were last year, I've done that on the student attendance, I'm certainly able to do that. I can certainly look into that.
Where I'm going with this is, I'm trying.
Is it gonna get worse, you mean?
I'm trying to divide in my head as a member of the Board of Ed and as we're entering next year, when we're gonna have to be dealing with the budget and things of that sort, I'm trying to deal in my head with how much of it is related to COVID that, that, you know, if we, if, if, if those were the average number of absences in a non-COVID time, are we just so completely understaffed that we're not able to? Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where the problem is.
Okay, well, I certainly can go back and pull data so that we can make a comparison, we've been doing that with the student attendance. So we certainly can do that and, and give the board some kind of, you know, way to look at it. I do know that there's no way we can be any better off in COVID times because the minute you have a positive case and there's any close contacts, remember, positive cases are popping up all over the community, it's not about school positive cases.
Right.
Or, you know, your spouse, your child, anyone in your family ends up positive, you end up quarantined. So there's, it's like another layer of staff needing to not come to work for what, for just one reason.
Right, well, another, another layer of that is the, is the instructions that we're giving people, if you feel at all sick. Like, there are a lot of situations where people would probably still come that now, out of extra caution during COVID, they're being encouraged not to. So I guess I just, at some point, and I don't need it immediately, but I think as we go into the budget setting process, it would be very helpful for us to get a little more information from you all about how this compares to other years. Because looking at those numbers, I find it hard to believe that it isn't related to COVID, either directly.
I can tell you, the staff.
Or tangentially to COVID.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, I know that, I know that the, the data from Monday, those were not COVID-related absences, those were just absences. So, but yeah, I know what you're saying.
But we don't know whether those, that's why it would be good to see how it compares to previous years. And I don't want to belabor the point, does anybody else have any questions before we move on? Okay, thanks.
All right, let me go back to my presentation here. Okay, so as I said, we've been tracking data for student attendance, but the state is still requiring us to track attendance. In fact, the very first thing, Neil and I had a Zoom meeting with Iris White from the Alliance District and that was one of the first data points she wanted to talk about was how are we doing with student attendance? It's very much still an indicator for the State Department of Education. We, the district is obviously monitoring attendance daily and then producing weekly reports by school and by the district. We are currently in Week 11 of school. Week nine, which is ending on November 6th, you can see I've, just gave you a quick little snippet of information. We were at 84.89% in, you know, present or attending. This year, as compared to 92% last year, in Week 10, we were at 86% as compared to 93%. The lowest attendance rates so far that we've encountered were Week 8, which ended October 30th. That is, that, that was the final week of our first move to virtual learning. And it went down almost 10% from 82.93 to 93.81. So we, we are aware. Well, we're aware from our first attempt at moving to a virtual environment for a couple of weeks that it didn't, that our students didn't necessarily respond the way we'd like them to. So here's just a chart for each school. In yellow are this year's attendance rates, above them are last year's attendance rates and the two green, Week 7 and Week 8, are the two virtual weeks we already experienced in October. So we're tracking it very carefully. All of the schools have decreased, some more drastically than others, but there's been a decrease in attendance from year to year for each of our schools. And again, we're tracking attendance for both the people, the students who are in person and the students who attend virtually. So we're, we're not seeing students engage to the same level in either, you know, either place. Here's Barrows Wyndham Middle School and the high school. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Any questions, anybody? Okay, thanks, Tracy.
Yeah.
Keep moving.
All right, so this is an update on ventilation, I don't know if Dawn's on the call.
I did see her earlier, I think she is.
Dawn, if you're on the call, feel free to jump in, you know, I don't understand any of this stuff. I have to ask her to tell me what all the little words, she'll write me notes with AHU and RTU and I'm like, you need to tell me what that means, I have absolutely no idea what these things are. So we're coming along, they're doing a great job. The facilities department, maintenance, our maintenance men here, as well as the BT Lindsay technician have been working really hard. We are coming down the home stretch to have all this ventilation repair work complete. You can see Sweeney School, as, the gym units need to be replaced and repaired. They're expecting to have that done by Monday, the 23rd, which is just a few days from now. And they have completed all the classroom filter replacements. Same work is being done at North Wyndham and they're monitoring all the classroom repairs they've already done. North Wyndham, Wyndham Middle School and Wyndham High School have to have their air handling units balanced. So they're working on getting that done, you know what, I just realized, this is not the. You know what, I just realized, this is not the most up-to-date presentation. This could be part of my, this could be part of my issue tonight. There's one more piece of information on Wyndham High School. I'm gonna read it to you. Give me one sec. Wyndham High School has a little more work to be done, and it should be in that slide there, but it isn't. Let me stop to share and grab that for you.
It's okay, we understand how much time each day is spent doing things that wouldn't normally, we wouldn't normally have to spend your time doing.
Well, actually, I could tell you-
Jump in if you can't find it.
If, yeah, well, I'm gonna pull up her email that walks me through everything. But it is true, if the superintendent thing doesn't work out, I'm gonna look for a job at DPH, because literally, that is all I do. All day long, I'm on the phone with someone related to the Department of Public Health. All right, so the high school. The C Wing is fully functional, up and running. The A Wing needs their air handling unit, the AHU thing, I had to be schooled on what that was. The B Wing has three exhaust fans that still need to be worked on. Their target dates for both of that work is December 4th. And the classroom ventilator filters are in the process of being changed out. So the high school's well on its way to having all their work complete, which is actually kind of impressive, given the amount of work that needed to be done there.
So we're talking about, now that we're going virtual, this work will pretty much be done in these buildings by the time people are back in the classrooms.
That's correct. That's what we're hoping. As long as they don't get up there, and I know Dawn tells me all the time to be really cautious, because they could get up there and find something they weren't anticipating, you know, stumbling upon. So I, I think she's smart to say that, because given how old some of our buildings are, it's really important that we keep that in mind. All right, just letting the Board know that I continue to have daily communication with the Department of the local health district. Patrice Sulik is the director. We have a weekly webinar with the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health. We receive emails, and recently received an email from the Commissioner Cardona and Dr. Gifford, who is the director of the entire Connecticut State Department of Public Health. We have revised information on Addendum 4, basically spelling out what districts need to do before they make decisions to change their learning models. I had a phone call yesterday with Dr. Lynn Sosa. She is the Deputy State Epidemiologist. On that phone call, I asked her directly if there was any science behind, you know, considering closing the district for two weeks after Thanksgiving, if that in any way could help us reduce the spread or keep people safer or, you know, limit the amount of infection we end up in our building, in our building. She told me that she does not have any science to suggest that. She says, obviously, they know that respiratory illness gets transferred at holiday times, because people are together at holiday times, and that's how respiratory illness gets transferred from person to person. So she knows that it obviously increases after holiday gatherings, but they've never actually tracked whether keeping school closed after a holiday gathering has an impact. And they also have never opened up schools with other mitigation strategies in place. We've never gone to school in masks, we've never been socially distanced, we've never had such a cleaning, you know, disinfecting and cleaning protocol. She said, there's no science right now to tell, to tell any of the districts that, yes, you should close for two weeks after Thanksgiving. It's the safer thing to do, because they've just simply never done an experiment like that. This is brand new, it hasn't happened in a hundred years. And it, well, and even, even what happened a hundred years ago is not like what's happening now. So, and in addition to all this, we continue to have at least a bi-weekly call with the governor. We had ours tonight at five o'clock. So ongoing communication all about COVID. Everything is related to COVID. Someday, we're gonna get back to teaching and learning, I assure you. All right, so just bringing you up to speed, everyone knows, until we move to the virtual, the virtual model, we are in hybrid. Hybrid, as you can see from the screen there, means that Cohort A is in on Monday, Cohort B on Tuesday, Wednesday is still our virtual day. Thursday, Cohort A is back, Friday, Cohort B is back. And we chose the AB, AB rotation, because it limited the number of days in between when our students actually saw a human being, in terms of those that are in person. We felt from, what we learned from the spring was long gaps of time without that human connection seemed to help our students disengage, which is the opposite of what we wanted. So we tried to keep the number of days in between seeing a person limited. The hybrid model was not designed to be a sustainable model. It was temporary, it was designed so we could go through safety protocols and figure out how to live with this six-foot social distancing goal and just how to function under this new normal. What we've, so I really do think at some point, we need to eliminate the hybrid model. I think it's really important that we get back to a place where kids come to school at least four days a week, and that the school is somehow closer to normal than it is right now. So what we've started to do in each of our schools is to gather data around how families would feel about coming back to, in in-person learning. If there wasn't hybrid as an option, and they had to choose either fully in-person or fully virtual, what would they choose? So on the next few slides, we've put together the elementary summary data from the parents' surveys. Middle School and the High School are working on their data now, and we'll present that as soon as it's available to you. Obviously, when we do make this transition, and we won't make the transition while the town is still in a red alert category, when we do make this transition, the elementary schools will come first before we consider what's happening at the middle school and the high school. So just, the big thing that everyone talks about is the six-foot social distancing. Everyone knows, you know, that's what's recommended by just about every state and federal agency. I just put some bullets on the, on this slide. The Center for Disease Control recommends you stay at least six feet apart from one another. The American Academy of Pediatrics says that three-foot, three-foot social distancing would work, but ideally, it should be six feet. And that if you are, if six feet can't be obtained, then you should have face coverings. As everyone knows, we're in face coverings all day long in schools. That's a mitigation strategy that's a non-negotiable. The State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health recommend six feet where feasible. They literally have the words "where feasible" all over their document. They also reference the idea that we're using multiple mitigation strategies at any given time, and so that if you can't meet the six-foot social distancing, you're relying on all the other pieces, all the other strategies. OSHA recommends six feet, but also lists a number of other mitigating strategies that can help reduce transmission. The Director of our local health district describes the six-foot social distancing as the gold standard, but has let us know that even within her local district, there are many health districts that are not at six-foot social distancing, and she's still not seeing a whole lot of, we're not seeing school transmission, thank goodness. The one thing I want the Board to know is if we get to this place where we eliminate the hybrid, you're gonna see in the data, I'm gonna show you in the next few slides, we will not have six-foot social distancing in our, in all of our classrooms. Some of them will stay at six feet, but some of them will not. And so if there's a positive case in a classroom and we're not at six feet, it is possible that an entire classroom goes home to be quarantined at one time. That is possible. It doesn't mean that people are gonna, that those students or that teacher is going to end up testing positive, but they still have to be home for fourteen days. So just something to think about, that we have to be aware of if we move to this model. So here is North Wyndham's data. They polled the teachers, we concede total enrollment, four hundred and twenty-six students. If we were to give the parents an option, sixty-two percent of those students would come back in person. And what we did was, if we didn't get a response from a parent, we added those numbers to the in-person numbers, just to be certain that we weren't undercounting or undercalculating. So you can see, eleven of their twenty-four classes would stay at the six-foot social distancing. Seven would, would get a social distance of about four to five feet, and six would reach three-foot social distancing. So just important for us to understand, that's what it would look like if we moved to this, to the, eliminating the hybrid at North Wyndham. And Nachog School, a hundred and ninety-four students would come fully in person, about sixty-six percent. Eight of their classrooms would stay at six-foot social distancing. They work all the way down, they actually end up with three classrooms that have less than three feet of social distancing. And you can see the others there. So again, just important to know. So if there's, if there's a positive case in the classes that are below the six-foot social distancing, they could all go home for quarantine. Wyndham Center School, a hundred and thirty-six students would come fully in person, fifty-nine percent. And there's the breakdown for the classrooms in that school. About half could still stay at the six-foot social distancing. You'll notice our data is very different in each of the buildings. Our classroom sizes are different, the number of students in each classroom is different, the percent of students who want to come fully in person is different. We're sort of all over the place. We each have, each school has its own little set of issues, problems to deal with. I see Angela shaking her head like, right, right Angela? Sweeney School, a hundred and fifty-three students would come fully in person. Twelve, almost all of Angela, almost all of your classrooms stay at six foot. So you're one of the lucky ones, you must have large classrooms. And then she has a few more that would not reach the six-foot social distancing mark. Barrows has a tough, Barrows is in the toughest position. It's funny, it's our, it's our newest building, beautiful facility, but they put cubbies in the front of each of their classrooms. It's like a strangely shaped little, I don't know, structure, but it eats up a large amount of square footage. So they have very few classrooms that would stay at six-foot social distancing. Just two of their eighteen classrooms would, would stay there. So I know, I see Paula looking like, that's not a good thing. All right, so just some summary information. We have full in-person learners. On this particular survey, varies anywhere from fifty-nine percent to seventy-six percent, depending on the schools we're talking about. Little less than half of our classrooms would stay at six-foot social distancing. A fair amount of them will not be at six-foot social distancing. We're still trying to figure out parent communication regarding the timeframe needed for them to change their mind or give a different choice. Remember, they, right now, they have five, up to five days to choose to move from hybrid to, to move from virtual to hybrid. But if we're gonna end up in this situation, whenever we get off this red alert list, we are gonna have to consider what we're gonna give them for a timeframe. Some districts are going month by month, some are using a semester. We have to figure all that out, which will be part of the communication when we get there. Right now, we're still in the red alert, on the red alert list for the, you know, the governor's list, and it does not look like we're gonna get off it anytime soon. So I don't know that we have to worry about this just yet, but it is something that we're considering, because we know, once we get, once we move to this next phase, again, similar to one of the comments made at the beginning of the meeting, it's difficult to make transitions, right? It's difficult on everyone to go back and forth. So we would, we would need to understand who was choosing what and for how long. So definitely thinking about that.
Tracy, I wonder how many parents might change their mind if they knew what the distance would be in the classroom where their kid is going to be returning.
It's possible, and perhaps we have to put, well, right, they wouldn't know the data. They wouldn't know-
Right, they wouldn't know that, so, but they, you know, they may assume that if we're bringing the kids back, that they're all gonna be six feet apart.
Right, it's, it's not possible, and we'd have to make sure we communicate that clearly. And now we actually know how many have said that they would choose to come back in person. Before we had that information, it would just be a guess, so, you're right. I'm not sure. I do know that there are a lot of families that really want their kids to come back fully in person, you know, not only for normalcy for the, for the students, but to support their ability to go back to work and to do the things that they would normally do. So I, but you're right, I don't know how many would choose for their kids to be in that situation.
Well, I was just, in the chat, it just said that they were told social distancing may not be possible in the survey. But I think if I were a parent and I heard that my kid's classroom, they were gonna be two and a half feet apart, I might think differently, you know?
I don't know, right? Yeah, it's true.
After you, Ms. I, just something else to think about too, is for some of these students and some of these families, it's not about how safe and social distanced they are, needing to get back to-
It's a necessity, it's a necessity.
And that's what's driving this decision. And so in some ways, it's our responsibility to make sure that we do everything we possibly can. And I know we are, I'm not saying we're not, but do everything we possibly can and make sure our kids are safe, because if it's a necessity for them, their hands are tied and they don't have a choice, their employer-
Absolutely.
Because we're fully virtual or something like that, and then they hear, well, Wyndham Public Schools gone, you know, in-person again, then their job won't get held, and they could lose wages, employment, whatever, because they have no choice but to send their students. So I think that be really, really clear and really transparent on that, exactly what we're doing, building by building, to keep our kids safe. And what the, the chances are, if we can, you know, estimate them of someone getting sick in their classroom, and then what happens after, depending on the amount of social distancing.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things that I was actually sharing with, in an earlier meeting today. There are a number of districts that are open now, fully in-person, not without six-foot social distancing. None of our schools have classrooms that would allow, you know, these big palatial places where you'd be able to keep people that far apart. So there's a lot of districts that are fully in-person and that have not met the six-foot social distancing. Many of them started without being six foot apart. So I just wanna make that clear. They're not seeing any more transmission, at least, this is what the experts are telling us. They're not seeing any more transmission in schools than the ones that aren't at, the ones that are at six-foot social distancing. And the, the public health experts are saying, it's because of all of the mitigation strategies. It's not just social distancing. It's the wearing of masks, it's the cleaning, it's the disinfecting, it's washing your hands. It's just having a structure around all of the mitigation strategies. That's what DPH is telling us, that, yes, social distancing is important, but it's not, oh, and cohorting is another big one, but it's not the most important. It's all of them together, so.
Right, this is all uncharted.
Yep.
All uncharted, and I, I agree with what Tracy Lambert just said, that, you know, we have an obligation to try to meet the needs of the, of all the people in this district. We're sending, all the families that are sending their school, children to our schools. And, you know, as you said earlier in your presentation, all the science shows that the transmissions are almost always not happening in the schools.
That's correct. The not transmitting virus in schools, it is highly inconvenient though, because there's many cases impacting schools.
Right.
And you go home for fourteen days if you're considered a close contact. But we're quarantining large number of students and staff, and they're coming back with a negative test after having been in quarantine. So we're not, it's not transmitting in schools. I can, I can, I'm saying it over and over again, because it's really true. It's, and that, and that's what they're saying on all of our calls with the superintendents. They keep bringing up data that suggests that to be true. I know it doesn't make anyone feel any less worried, anxious about it, but that's what they keep telling us is a fact across the state of Connecticut, not just in Wyndham. All right, so this is just an update for the Board of Ed. We had considered trying to get an onsite rapid testing facility here. We were gonna, you know, use the school-based health center as the place that this would exist, but we've done a little bit of research, and we've thought, thought deeply about this, and we're probably not going in the direction of getting an onsite testing facility here. The onsite rapid test is for symptomatic students and staff, but our message continues to be to every student and staff member, if you're symptomatic, you should not be in school. So it's sort of a contradiction, if we put this testing facility in our school-based health center and say, we're gonna send all of our symptomatic students and staff there, we're contradicting ourselves. We also know that if you test negative on the rapid test, you still have to go get another test. And we're, we're concerned that that might be confusing to, you know, well, what do you mean, I have to test again, I should be able to just, you know?
Well, the efficacy of the rapid test is just not as good.
Right, and Wyndham is lucky enough to have multiple testing sites in and around the community, so it seems unnecessary for us to open another testing site, especially when it goes against what we keep trying to tell everyone, and that is, stay home if you're not feeling well. We're not gonna go and have, you will not see a rapid testing site coming this way, at least not anytime soon.
You know what would be interesting to find out around testing? Because, because that's my, in my job, this is what I do, and, I mean, paying attention to this health policy. It is confirmed that free testing will not be available after December 31st in the state, unless the feds pass a bill to send more money to the state.
That's not, that's not good at all.
So I really would love it if you, as a superintendent, would be saying to the governor's office and to the commissioner's office and to the public health, Department of Public Health people, what are you doing to make sure we get free testing continued after December 31st? Because that money, that money that came in through the big federal package will be, has to be spent down and will be gone. And that was confirmed by the Department of, the State Department of Public Health yesterday in a meeting I was in with them.
I certainly think that it's important for the superintendents to have that information and to share, particularly superintendents in districts that have high levels of poverty.
Because it's gonna be very hard for our communities to-
Right.
Tell people they have to go get testing when we're not sure it's gonna be free.
Right.
Lynn? I think also, we should, we should have everybody who's involved in this meeting right now and let the community know that they should be calling the state representatives and senators and everybody, and the governor's office, because I'm gonna use the word criminal, so we're criminal not to be testing everybody when, for, you know, who needs a test, and that it will cost money. That's like so- That's like so anti-public health, I cannot even begin to understand my ears and my comprehension right now, I'm like livid.
Well, I feel like I'm crying wolf about this, we've been bringing this up since July, and everybody seems to be pretending it's not going to happen, so. Hate to be a Debbie Downer, but it's, it's a bad public health issue right now.
I have a question. This is Ilda. Hi.
Hi, what's your question, Ilda?
Um, so when did you hear that it's going to be, that it's, it will be charged, people will be charged, I think the.
I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying people will be charged starting January 1st, but right now, the reason we have free, no-cost testing offered in the state is that there are contracts that the state has signed with these testers, like Griffin Hospital, Hartford Healthcare, whatever, that are being, those contracts are being paid for.
I see.
By the federal money that has come into the state, which dries up at the end of this year if Congress doesn't pass another care package to come back to the states.
Okay, thank you.
So, so don't, don't go saying they're going to be charged, they might come up with, they might come up with another way for it to be free, but, but there needs to be a plan in place, because we're going to be at the height of winter, and there may be no testing, free testing available, or less free testing available.
I see, that's ridiculous, but I'm not going to spread that.
All right, my last couple slides are just, um, the slides where I want to just recognize the amazing work that the entire staff has been doing under very unusual circumstances. From my, you know, leadership team to my teachers, support staff, food services, custodians, the nurses, my central office, the team in general, basically every single person in, in the entire organization, trying to work to make sure that our students have, um, in-person learning experience, simultaneously with a virtual learning experience, and that they have all their needs met. It's just been sort of, you know, incredible to watch, it is, everyone always says it's unprecedented times, it really is. We're, they're doing things they've never done before, so I really appreciate everything that's going on. And some of the things that I've been trying to do in the district to show that appreciation, I just put a few bullets up on, in this slide. The beginning of the year, we had a shortened, well, first of all, we shortened the school day with no impact to salary, so everyone is still receiving their same paycheck if they're hourly employees, even though the school day has been shortened. We had an early dismissal in September, we gave them back two hours with no impact to their salary, just trying to say, we recognize you're doing more than you've ever done before, or you're doing things you've never done before. Wednesday's remains a virtual day, which I've heard from teachers is something they really want us to try to keep, because they are juggling, um, extra work this year, given the virtual and in-person instruction happening simultaneously. Wednesday's is virtual with limited student contact time, we've also given them the option on Wednesdays to work from home. They had the option to work from home during the two weeks of virtual learning in October, if they can do their job from home, because not everybody can, obviously. We are, uh, working to give them back the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that's an early dismissal day already. So we're going to have the students do some catch-up work and not rely, not be relying on the staff. Some of the other things, um, that we're, that we're trying to do, we've given them access to the free Yale training, and we've even offered to pay up to five staff members in each building to take the training and then teach their staff some of the strategies to help keep themselves relaxed. At the beginning of the meeting today, Katina mentioned the Wellness Wednesday, and how appreciative she was of the first attempt to, to offer the staff members some relaxation, and, you know, recharging activities, and thank you to Miguel and Tanya and Tara Kramer for their work on that. So we're trying to do little things that are going to help the staff realize that we really do appreciate everything that they're doing, um, under very unusual circumstances. Any questions? Now, she's a cutie, huh? Laura finds these great pictures of our kiddos, I love it. All right.
That's a lot to, that's a lot to take in, it's very sobering.
It is, um, the, this year is something.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on.
I just want to say thank you, I just want to say thank you, Tracy, and your amazing staff, administrators, all the people on board. Thank you so much for all the work you guys do, keep our kiddos safe. That's it.
Okay.
So, we're going to move on to calendar and grading changes.
So this is just to let the board know, there's a couple adjustments to our district calendar. We've pushed back the elementary, uh, well, the parent-teacher conferences for pre-K, elementary, and Barrows, uh, so we pushed them back a week. We actually started school a week later than we originally planned, so we probably should have made this adjustment earlier on, but we're making it now. So instead of December 2nd and 3rd on the calendar, those early dismissal days will move to December 10th and 11th. Um, and obviously, we'll be working, each school will be working to communicate that information to their families. And the other calendar change is at the high school, and it's related to some adjustments to their grading practices. We learned that Wyndham High School's grading practices were not in alignment with many of the other, uh, local high schools, and certainly not with our, our, um, the reference group that we're a part of, the Derg or the Erg, however they are referring to it these days. So we've, uh, made some changes to the grading practices that would eliminate the need to have midterm exams, which is something that a lot of the high schools are doing now. I don't know whether this is a temporary change, but it's certainly a change that, that people are making now because of COVID, although I have heard that there's a little bit of a movement to try to eliminate midterm exams, summative exams in general. We'll talk more about that, this is just for this year. So we can actually take January 20th, 21st, and 22nd from the calendar, um, they were early dismissal days for midterms, and turn them back into full instructional days, so I'm just notifying the board that there will be some changes to the calendar.
Are there any questions on that?
I have a question, how does that affect ECE classes? Because I think they're required to do midterms and finals. Unless they waived it now for COVID, but they historically have had to do midterms and finals.
Pam, can you answer that by any chance?
I talked to the ECE teachers, and some of the classes that do require them from the college are going to embed them in their regular school day.
Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
Anything else on that topic? It just seems like we're adjusting, adjusting, adjusting.
You know, it, it is true, um, we probably could have predicted this, uh, earlier on, so I apologize for having not realized that. I, I do, I feel like I'm not at the top of my game here, there's just, there literally is so much stuff happening on a regular basis. But you're right, we're, we're going to keep evaluating and making adjustments as, you know, as we move along. I see that Neil and Rita just joined us, welcome.
Yep, welcome back.
Hopefully the Board of Finance went well.
It was a smashing good time.
Okay, great. All right, anything else for me?
I guess not right now, so we'll move on to committee reports. Thank you for putting all that together, and I know a lot of other people helped with it, and it reflects a lot of work from a lot of people on this meeting tonight and others who aren't here, so it's much appreciated. Um, so we're on to committee reports, and Mark, you're up, Finance and Audit Committee.
All right, well, we met just before this meeting, uh, reviewed the year-to-date budget, and it looks like we'll, at this point, we're still looking like we'll end in an okay position, we don't have anything that's over 100% on our, on the other lines. The major issue that came up, I guess, is that we have 17 unfilled certified positions, and so we're, we're not running, I don't want to say surplus, but we're running behind expenses in our certified and non-certified staff, because of the reasons that Dr. Youngbird pointed out earlier in this meeting, difficulty of getting staff to, hiring staff, finding staff, and getting substitutes. So that has a positive financial impact on us, but clearly a negative educational impact on us. The, we reviewed the COVID finding, and we've asked Dr. Youngbird to get ahold of Susan Johnson, because there's still confusion in the CRF funds, where we're submitting items for, to be reimbursed, and the state is saying, no, those items don't qualify for reimbursement, so it's about, I believe, about a million dollars worth of money there that we haven't been able to define exactly how we're going to get it. So we, they continue to put money over to the state to ask for them to be approved, but it doesn't seem to be a clear definition. So we've asked Dr. Youngbird to get ahold of Susan. The care money seems to be taken care of there, we're getting the care money that's being allocated properly, but it's this, but this CRF money where it's about, I believe Rita, it was 1.3 million that we need to spend by the end of December and hope to get reimbursed, so we're trying to find out exactly what's reimbursable before we spend it.
You may, you may want to explain to people, what does, what does CRF mean, Mark? Everybody may not know.
Good question, Rita, you want to?
Okay, I'll have Rita.
Corona relief funds.
Okay, thanks.
Coronavirus.
Yeah.
So how are those different from the care funds, exactly?
I think they're all from the Federal Cares Act, they're just different, um, they're different grants that we were able to apply for.
So we applied for the grant, and theoretically, we got, we got the 1.3 million grant for the CRF. Now it's just a difficulty of getting them to define what we can spend that money on.
They haven't approved the full 1.3 grant yet. They, they're still asking questions for us to justify some of the line items, the line items that we have, um, been approved for, we've expensed, but, um, we haven't gotten the full award yet. If that makes sense.
No, it didn't make sense anymore. So we will definitely ask, as I said, we've asked Tracy to, uh, to get Susan Johnson involved to help us with the state, so that, there, there should be some clearer guidelines of exactly what they'll accept and not accept is, that's what we're aiming for. As I say, we discussed, we, the board, the committee wants to recommend the transfers that are coming up later on the board agenda for approval. And the only other thing we talked about was the FY19 audit, which Neil and Rita just heard about at the Board of Finance meeting, and they'll bring information to us about that, and also be sharing the management letters to go along with that. The audits, I guess, are available on the website for those who want to go through and see the detail of the audits. And that was pretty much the committee meeting, Lynn.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions, or anybody who was at that meeting want to add anything?
You're talking about the Board of Finance?
Uh, do you want to say something about the Board of Finance meeting?
Well, the audit presentation was very positive, and I asked them to send the presentation to you and Trey, Dr. Youngberg, and, um, so that you all can see the presentation that they gave tonight. That would be great.
Good news, Rita?
Yeah, it was very positive.
Excellent, congratulations.
Congratulations, awesome.
It wa, it was positive, and the, the Board of Finance did share, um, just, there's a lot of positivity about the, the growing relationship with the Board of Education, and is appreciative of them coming to the meetings, and, and I just wanted to relay that, because they said it a couple times during the meeting.
That's great to hear.
Some positive news in 2020, woo-hoo! Had to make it to the middle of November for that to happen.
That's, that's really good to hear, though.
And, um, I'm going to add that I think we should let the community at large know about the transparency and the positivity of, of these audits and the efforts Dr. Youngberg and her staff have done to accomplish that. I mean, we should have like a big article in the paper in the front page or something, nothing.
We'll figure out a way to, to trumpet our, our successes, I think, you know, especially as we go into 2021, and we're trying to figure out, like, the budget process, um, I think that's part of the whole, we have to tell that story, so.
Absolutely, and the, and the, the stronger the relationship is between the Board of Ed and the town and Board of Finance, the better off our kids are. So it's really important that that relationship be built and rebuilt and, yeah, improved every day, thank you.
So through the miracle of social distancing, we're closer than ever, huh?
Well, we happen to have, we happen to have a chair of the Board of Finance who really has been making an extra effort. Tyler Griffin, and, and he's bringing along the rest of the board with him on that, and that's really nice. And, um, I think that there is a, a much, uh, more respectful, uh, relationship between the two boards now. Okay, so hearing nothing else, thank you for the report, Mark. We're going to go on to school planning and design, and Tracy Lambert, you're on.
Thank you, and as a nice segue there, Tyler has also been attending most of the school planning and design committee meetings, so he can keep an ear on needs that are coming up and things, especially ventilation-based, um, which is where I'm going to start my report. Each of the schools is 90% or better, with the exception of the high school, on their ventilation renovations. Barrows is at 100, Wyndham Center is at 100, Natchog is at 100. Sweeney has some air handlers in the gym that he repairs, otherwise it's complete. The middle school is 95% complete, um, it has a couple of motors and belts that need work. Natchog, the biggest issue right now is that they're noisy. When the air handlers are on, they are creating some noise, and they were working on mitigating that noise factor. When you're teaching little people, it can't be really, really noisy, because they get distracted a little easier. The high school, where we have had BT Lindsay working with Dawn Tomacos' staff, um, has five fans left that need attention. We can now close windows, even though it's getting colder out, because the air handlers are working at capacity. Getting, um, filters to replace the vents in the classroom, um, fixtures has proven to be a bit difficult, so Dawn and her staff have ordered rolls of the ventil, of the, um, filter material, and they are putting them into frames that they are making themselves. So they're being a little ingenious there, because they're hearing that February or March could be the dates that, um, we are able to get the actual filters. So, um, changing them often, whenever they start to get dirty, they have not been changed nearly as often as they should have been in the past, so we're getting on top of that now and staying on top of that, especially now that it's getting cold, and the teachers that had fans in the windows are, um, preferring to close the windows and, you know, keep some type of temperature control in their classrooms.
Tracy, this is, this is Dawn Tomac, if I could just interject, we actually did, we did get the, the filters did come in for the classroom ventilators, and we are now currently installing them, so.
Excellent, I didn't have that information at my last meeting, thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, they just came in, so.
Okay, so thank you, Dawn, for correcting me, I appreciate that. Yeah, we met last week, um, November 5th, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, November 5th, so they hadn't come in yet at that point. Um, we, um, we are working with Blue Skies and Titan Energy to do some solar panels at, um, some solar alleles at Barrows and Sweeney, no, North Wyndham, I can see Tracy's mouth moving, North Wyndham, I can't remember, and I didn't have it written down here. We also had a $400,000 grant for the Sweeney HVAC upgrades, and that is coming in around $700,000. So that grant we are using to upgrade fire alarm systems and, um, fire alarms in the elementary and middle schools. The high school one will be addressed with the renovation, so that would be throwing money away. I'm reading here. Um, Wyndham Center is having some water issues, they had a new well installed probably three or four years ago, I was on that committee, and they had some sulfur, so we had put some filters in there, and some, um, other heavy metals are starting to show up in the water, not at, um, significantly measurable amounts, but at trace amounts, and so we're trying to mitigate that in case it does go up, um, and make sure that those heavy metals don't damage the pipes, because that's a headache we don't need and we can't afford right now. Um, and then there are two town committees being run right now, one to replace, um, oil tanks, and the other one to replace the roof at Wyndham Center. Tara Kramer, um, Mr. Camacho, and, um, Chuck Pennywell are on those committees, Tara's chairing them, and they were supposed to be doing interviews last week and this week on Tuesday to select finalists in those two committees. And so I'm sure I'll have an update on that in the next meeting. Um, I think that's it, is there anything I missed, Dawn or Dr. Youngberg?
Anything you want to say about the town council and the high school renovation?
Oh, last night, that was a whole different thing, but last night, um, there was a town council meeting, and initially, the referendum had approved over 112, just over 112 million for the high school renovation. The state, um, during a previous administration, capped that project at $78 million. And, um, after going back and forth several times, and I've been privileged to sit down. And after going back and forth several times, and I've been privileged to sit on, sit in on these meetings with members of our building committee, professionals, Dr. Youngberg and others with the state, they have agreed to give us the $112 million. They're putting it on the recommendations that will go through in June or July. They have told us to continue to go forward and get everything but the contract signed so we can do the bidding process and everything. We just can't sign contracts until, until the legislature approves the, the final number. Last night, the town agreed to amend their previous motion and give us the full 20%, 20.4, 20.37% that the state will not be reimbursing. So they will fill that gap from what the state doesn't reimburse to the 112 million after having capped it previously at the 78 million and paying their share. So that was a huge relief for those of us that are on the building committee. Ms. Calucci isn't here tonight, but we'd been really considering cutting corners and like, not cutting corners, but not getting things that we might want to have gotten. We've done things like lessened the number of blowers per classroom for the air conditioning and stuff like that. There'll still be air conditioning, but it'll be a little bit less. And so we were looking at other places to cut money if the town hadn't agreed to add on to their, their share of the funds that we were passed at referendum. They did that last night. So that was a big relief. And I'd like to thank Al Korzinski, Ms. I, Ms. Calucci, everybody who came and weighed in and encouraged the town council to do so. Mr. Proz, he's been instrumental because he sits on both committees. So those are all big hurdles that we're slowly overcoming and moving our way forward.
That's a great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that got reported at tonight's meeting.
And then this, this isn't part of school planning and design, but I have been sitting on three, coming up on four contract negotiations. The teachers' union, we're going to ask to have an executive session added to the December meeting. A way we can ratify the teachers' union contract because that is at its end. We began negotiations with custodians. We are in, in negotiations with educational personnel and secretaries. So those are moving forward. I've been working closely with Jessica Ritter and, no, it wasn't the teachers' union, it was the WAA. I see Pam, Kami shaking her head. No, it was the WAA. I'm sorry. It was the administrators.
So we'll have a, we'll have an executive session.
In our December meeting for the WAA contract. Thank you, Kami. I'm sorry. And, and yep, so we've been meeting with all of those, myself, Stephanie Garrett and Jess Ritter. And everybody has been wonderful to work with, both our staff and our legal personnel and our HR director. And we're moving along smoothly and I'm impressed with the, the pace at where that's moving. And I'm grateful to the board for letting me be a part of that.
Thank you very much for covering it.
That's what I was going to say. Thank you, Tracy, for being a board member on the committee. I appreciate that.
So long, it felt like the reports were just coming at us and, you know, everything was already done and we were just signing the documents and moving along. And it's nice to be able to have a little bit of input. And, you know, if there's something I need to come back to the board about, I will. But so far, everything's been going very smoothly.
Thank you. Any questions for Tracy Lambert?
Just saying thank you and thank you and thank you.
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things that Dr. Youngberg expressed to me, I think maybe in the past couple of months is like her, her increased understanding of how much volunteer time goes in to being on boards at the town level. And this is an amazing board. We have some people who are really spending many, many hours each month.
I am totally impressed by the, the political machine that exists in this little town and the amount of time that you all put in. It's pretty, it's amazing. When I think about all the committees that you're a part of and everybody's got some side thing happening, it's very impressive. Very impressive.
Thank you. So Policy Committee, my word, you have us busy. You, you have a lot of things on the agenda that we had first readings on last week and, I mean, last meeting. And we have a bunch of things teed up for tonight. Is there anything you'd like to report to us? Ilda?
Just, well, thank you, Tracy, for that fabulous report. And another great, another good news for 2020. At the renovation as new for the high school will be moving forward in 2021. So that'll be something good to look forward to for us. As far as our committee, as you can, as you've already said, Lynn, we've been very busy. We're trying to update our old policies and some of them are really, really old. So that's why we're bringing in you many at a time. Hopefully, we'll be able to move steady, steady along.
I just love those 101, 111-page board packets. That was a lot. No, I'm not complaining. We need to do this.
Yeah, we do. So, you know, we, we, we realized that we needed to update them. So. And our next meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been postponed. We'll probably be meeting sometime after Thanksgiving. That's about it. And thank you to Katina, Paula, the Youngbird, Neil, and all the other members, Suzanne, and all the other members of Wyndham Public School that helps us with this, with this committee. Thank you. And Miguel also, if I, if I didn't mention it.
Okay, I, you know, while we're, while we're, while we have you, I have a point to make. I understand that we need to table action on number seven. The approval of changes to policy regarding distance learning and take that up in December instead. Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I sent an email, Ilda and Katina, you'll see my email, that we noticed that the, the language in this version of the policy is, it goes against what we're actually doing in the district. So we don't want to obviously approve it that way. So we're going to make revisions. My team will make revisions and then we'll bring it back to the committee for your next meeting so that it can go for its second reading in December, if that's okay with you.
Yes, that's fine.
That's fine. So I just want to make sure that's okay so that we hold on that, we'll table that one. So we won't take action on it this evening. But we'll take action on all the other things you've sent to us.
Thank you.
Any questions for the policy team? It's yeoman's work. I appreciate you guys weeding through all of this. It really needed to be done. So, thank you. Um, Executive Committee did not meet this month. There was really no big pressing reason for us to meet. I do expect that we will meet on December 9th, which is our next board meeting. But also earlier that evening is our regular Executive Committee meeting. So stay tuned. I'll have a report at our next meeting, at our next full board meeting on the 9th. Does anybody have any questions for me? Mary Calucci is moving forward on, you know, making sure we get through the evaluation process with, with Superintendent Youngberg. And we'll be here, we'll be continuing to move on that. That's just one of the things. Okay, any other thing under Committee Reports? I want to note for Janet that Mark Doyle had to step out of the meeting at about 10 minutes after 8:00. He sent me a message. For, for personal reasons, they had, had to step off. So he isn't here when we do the roll call vote for the action items. I just wanted to bring that up. So we have a bunch of action items to take and they all require roll call votes. It's going to take a while then to get through all these, but I would entertain a motion, if that's okay, to adopt some of the policy changes in groups at least. So think about that as we get to those. The first, the, the, the budget process, the meeting calendar and the committee meeting calendar, I'd like to vote on separately from the policy changes. So I would entertain a motion from somebody to approve, we could approve them all separately or we could approve items one, two, and three together, perhaps?
Just a comment that I noticed there is a mistake on the recommended approval of the committee meetings for next year. I notified Dr. Youngberg and Janet. It's just, it's just a typo. Instead of a Thursday, it was dated on a Friday for the Policy Committee. And they will, but that's the only change.
Well, let's look at the calendar then because we should make that adjustment. Somebody needs to make a motion and then we can adjust it. So. Does somebody want to make a motion to?
I'll make that move. I'll make that motion, Heather.
Okay.
To approve items one, two, and three together and then make the adjustments to the calendar? Or what, what are we doing here? I'm sorry.
All right. I'll make a motion to add items one, two, and three together and then make adjustments as necessary.
Okay. That motion was made by Tracy, seconded by Katina. And so the changes that we want to make are under the Policy Committee.
Yes, for the meeting on October and December of 2021, should read, I cannot pull it up right now, but it should be the day before. It should be on a Thursday instead of a Friday.
So it is October 21st and December 16th.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for those catches. So with that amended calendar to change the Policy Committee meetings to October 21st and December 16th, is there any further discussion on items one, two, and three? I just want to mention that when we adopt this, I want to make sure that people put that budget calendar into their datebooks, into their calendars, because there's a lot of work that we have to do on the budget together. Need to have quorums to do it.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. I.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Dr. Gabon Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Thank you.
And Carrie's. So now we're on to items four, five, six. We're tabling. I guess we need to have a motion to table. Or do we have to have a motion to table?
Oh, moved.
A motion to table number seven.
I'll do the second.
Seconded by Ilda, made by Katina. So we'll vote on that first. So could we get a roll call, Janet, please?
Ms. I.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Dr. Gabon Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Okay. So that item is tabled. Now, we could entertain a motion to take the policy recommendations all together or take them one by one or single any of them out, whatever your pleasure is.
I make a motion. We, we put them all together.
Second. So that would be items four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Yes.
Okay. So Ilda made that motion. Who seconded it?
Katina.
Katina, okay. So is there any discussion on these items? This is the second reading. Seems pretty straightforward. We will need to do work to fulfill our responsibility on succession planning once this passes. Okay, all those, I mean, we'll do a roll call.
Ms. I.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Dr. Gabon Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, that carries. The next, the next action item is approval of budget transfers. And those were talked about at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting and they are in our packet.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
Oh, sorry, Katina.
Seconded by Katina. Any discussion on the budget transfers? Anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to thank Rita because they're so clear and so concise and we haven't had that prior to Rita taking over. They're understandable and she knows the explanation when we ask for it. Yes, raise a roof, Tracy. Exactly. It's been fabulous. When you ask a question, you get an honest answer and it's concise and it's complete. And she knows what she's talking about before she walks into a room. I am really grateful for that, Rita. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're here. Any other conversation about this, discussion about this? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, Janet, please.
Ms. I.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Dr. Gabon Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the final thing we had on the agenda here was possible action regarding winter sports. And Dr. Youngberg didn't really refer to this in her report to us earlier on, but she's been sending us all the information on this all along. And I think we all understand that on, I think it was Tuesday of this week, the CIAC met and they postponed the start of the permissible winter sports until, I think, January 19. And, and there are a number of winter sports that have been, just taken off the, off the books as being viable during COVID. So given the sports that are played in my district, if I'm not incorrect, I believe that the only one that would be potentially starting in January would be basketball. Am I correct on that?
I think that's correct, but I'm, I'm going to see if James is on the call still. Is he? No.
It was, it was basketball, swimming and something else, hockey, but we don't.
Right. We don't have hockey and it no longer exists.
We no longer have swimming. So it was only basketball, I think.
I, I think you're correct. Yeah.
Is there any discussion on this today or do people want to just hold off on this at this point?
I make a motion. We hold off at this point since they, they postponed it until after January.
Until January.
Until January.
So that's basically a motion to table it. Is that what you're saying? Ilda?
Yes.
Do I get a second on that?
I'll second.
I'm second.
I was going to say, no second?
Second by Paula, I guess. Any further discussion? I'd like to reserve the right to come back to this in December at our, one of our December meetings. I know Mark is not here tonight and this is an issue I know he feels very strongly about. I want to make sure that if we need to discuss it, we do.
I just have a quick question. So right now, there's no sport.
No, right now.
Is football over?
Oh, oh, right now, you mean, being played now?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think all the seasons are over at this point.
Football wouldn't normally be over. I don't know if it's over because of COVID, but because we've gone back to, for virtual, sports don't take place. That's been the practice so far this fall.
I, I actually think the season was shortened and it's over, but I'm going to verify for you. I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. But right now. But right now, uh, there would be nothing played until January and that would be basketball at this point. And we, we may revisit this. So is there any further discussion on this before we take a vote on the?
Can I just re, can I amend my, uh, my motion just to say we'll table it for this month? The winter sports?
I don't think you need to. You can, sure. Go right ahead. That's what you're saying?
I amended just to say that we'll table it this month.
For this month. Okay, and Paula, is that okay with you since you seconded the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please Janet.
Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, so that gets us to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment?
Lynn, can I say something even though I'm a board member?
Yes, you may.
Yesterday, when the information from Dr. Youngberg came out, and this isn't at all telling anybody what to do. It's just feedback. People kept saying to me, I was at work, and why are we going back and forth? Just go fully virtual or go fully in person, do something. But the going back and forth is harder on my kids than staying one way, which is kind of reflective of what Nicole Bay had said earlier. So I just want everyone to consider, Dr. Youngberg and the people that she speaks to, staying virtual at least until after the holidays and then coming back in January. And you can disagree with me. I'm just giving my opinion from what I'm hearing for feedback too. Stay well until after Christmas, after the, the Christmas, New Year's break, and then back in person and giving it a try then. Just because the chaos of two weeks on, two weeks off is a lot for families at what's already a stressful time of year with the holidays. And it's a lot on students at, at a heightened time of emotions and stuff like that. Just a suggestion, I just wanted to put it out there.
I'd like to say something about that.
Jaime, go right ahead.
Yes, I would agree to that. You know, the going back and forth has really been stressful, I think, for families, for everyone. And then we may come back next week and then leave the week after. And I think we should do what, just go for a time, uh, virtual, everyone. That would be my thinking.
Thank you, Jaime. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment?
You know it's funny when Jaime agrees with me.
Most of the times. You haven't noticed.
We have, Joanne Haddad has her hand up and then Paula. And then Kathy Davis.
I appreciate it. Good evening. Great presentation as always. You know, there are two schools of thought. And while I, I completely, you know, can concur with Tracy and, and with Nicole, also Jaime, I, you know, there are two schools of thought. We, we have a lot of, we, we keep in mind the social emotional piece, right? And even if it does mean the kids are coming in for two weeks, it kind of gives parents a moment as well, those that are sending their kids in for even two days a week. It gives them a moment. It gets the kids to see other kids again. We are, we are doing, you know, using all the mitigating strategies and we're doing it well, I might add. I, I, I cannot stress enough too, I just wanted to put another, and again, I'm not saying which way I'm thinking it should go, just throwing that other piece out there as well. It is hard though with going back and forth, there's no doubt. But I, I would like to just put in one quick positive note, because we can always use that. I can't say enough, I can't say enough about the teachers and what they're doing. I, I cannot tell you how they've had to switch their, everything they've learned about teaching to this whole virtual, you know, going this virtual road. And what they're doing, they, I, I called them the frontline heroes of this epidemic, pandemic, excuse me. I've called them the frontline heroes and they truly, truly are. I mean, we, administrators right now, I, I'm, I'm just, you know, no, no dissing on, on administrators, obviously, but we're secondary to them right now. There, there's just no doubt. And, and not that we weren't before, but even more so. I, I, I hail to them. What they're doing is just amazing, what they self-teach, what they teach each other, even at a distance, sharing their screens, self-learning, all of it. It's unbelievable what they're doing. And at the same time, getting those kids to come online is just phenomenal. And, and I just can't thank them enough. And I hope we continue as a community to thank our teachers. I want to throw one other thing out there. There's another wrench in that for teachers. And that is that we've, we've essentially invited every parent in our community into our classroom. And not that we're doing anything wrong in our classrooms, but it's a, is we're finding how difficult, and parents are finding how difficult it is for them to give up their, their power and their voice with their kids when they hear someone else holding their child accountable, trying to get them to do things. And, and it's a, it's just a whole different life. But those teachers are coming back every day and taking more and giving more. And I just wanted to throw that out and let you know that our teachers just truly, truly, truly are rocking this. Thank you.
Can we unmute ourselves, please, and give a round of applause for the teachers?
I appreciate that.
And admin, and admin. Even the superintendent.
You all deserve a lot more than that.
And I hope also when we say teachers.
Have that on the computer.
Professionals and Calcutta and all the staff.
I know what it's called because.
Okay, so.
I know I'm on the other computer, but at this one.
Somebody's not on mute.
Miguel, okay, he muted.
Paula was up next and then Kathy Davis.
Wow, I almost don't know what to say after all that. I, I totally agree. Congratulations, good work, applause to our school system. Dr. Youngberg for your leadership and, and all of the teachers and everyone who's working so hard. I, I do have one question though, relative to being virtual. I, I understand going back and forth has got to be incredibly difficult, but we do have to kind of defend that position, is my understanding, if the decision is to, to go virtual for extended periods of time post our red alert period. I, is that?
The, um.
A true understanding?
Well, this is public comment, so usually it's back and forth.
Okay, so you don't want?
I will make an exception because, I will make an exception though, because I think this is a very important point.
So the directive from the state, and it was reiterated again by the governor, is that they want as much in-person learning available to our students as possible. They recognize that school systems are going to run into staffing issues, that there may be, you know, community spread in certain places that may cause you to close, but they really want you to consider keeping your doors open for as long as you possibly can, because they know the benefits of in-person. Somebody's laughing, but.
Somebody's, somebody's not muted or something.
Guess it could be worse, having to listen to something when they're not muted. That was just laughter, right? Not a bad, but yeah, so we, we are, it would be going against the state's recommendation to, and not offering in-person learning for an extended period of time.
But if I may say, waterbury is online.
Jaime, Jaime, I'm going to call order here. This is public comment, not discussion.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay. Kathy is up next. There you go Kathy.
So first of all, I apologize for getting here so late. Very busy day, but learning a lot. So I appreciate your patience with this. I didn't plan on speaking tonight at all. The comments and understanding how people may feel hesitant about virtual versus the hybrid and how much time we spend going back and forth between those times. I can let you know that it's pretty evident, my point of view as a teacher in a sixth grade classroom right now, to see the students in class, to be able to immediately stand next to them and, and speak with them quickly about what they're working on, keeping them directed in the right spot for what they're learning at that time. It's just, it is, they're really, I understand why they want people to get, have that in-person teaching. I absolutely agree with it. I want you to know that I feel with, with the training we've had and with the safety protocols that we've been following, I feel completely safe about being at school. I was a little sad to see that we're going to be going the two weeks virtual, but it, in a way, makes sense, especially with the holiday. And, you know, so I guess it'll be fine for these two weeks, but I absolutely cannot wait to get back for those next two weeks in December before we go on holiday break. And I, I do hope that that's what's going to happen. And the sooner we get back to hybrid and then eventually in-person learning, I'm really looking forward to it. So I'm just giving you my point of view as working in the classroom. I do feel safe and I appreciate all the training and, and the direction that our administrators are bringing us in. So thanks for my, thanks for allowing me to say that.
Thank you. That's very important for us to hear your perspective. I appreciate you chiming in at the end of the long day.
Can I just give a shout out to the school nurses?
Well, okay, yes, yes, we're not trying to leave anybody else. Next up is Raquel Luna.
Hello, good evening. I also would like to just say thank you to everyone I know, everyone, including the board and all the admins, everyone, all the staff. Everyone's really working hard to make everything work. And it's a very weird situation we're all in. As a parent, I know my kids really, they thrive in the classroom setting. And with three kids and, you know, not a big house, it is really difficult when they're all turned virtually at the same time. So I know personally, I would prefer in-school and full in-person if possible. And I know my goal would be maybe to see if there was a way we could look at it different for each level. So for example, elementary school would be a different approach than maybe middle school or high school. Because I, I know like for parents, the biggest struggle that I hear from other people in, in the community is the childcare piece for the elementary school children. And, you know, they need their jobs, they need the security of their income. And it's like a real struggle that I hear from other community members and, and even myself, just being able to make those adjustments with family members to watch my kids whenever there's changes in, in the model. And that was it, but thank you. And, you know, we're all doing our best. Have a great night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Raquel. As a mother of three, I, I cannot imagine what it would have been like if I had to deal with it, deal with the uncertainty when my kids were younger. So, um, uh, there's a, Megan Jenkins. Why don't you unmute yourself and identify yourself, please?
Okay, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I typed my whole question in, but basically I'm looking for clarification regarding attendance across the district. So it seems like certain schools have different attendance policies regarding when kids are on a Google Meet or if they miss a Google Meet. Some teachers seem to be really responsive and if they miss the Google Meet, as long as they complete an assignment, the teachers go back in and they mark them in attendance. While other families are conveying that that's not the scenario going on. If the kid does not attend a meet, they are marked absent. You know, with the unpredictable nature of the internet, you know, it seems like around noon time when California starts logging, logging into Google Classroom, we see a slowdown of the internet and kids get kicked off. I think that if we had some kind of protocol that was consistent across all the schools and all the teachers followed the same thing, it would help our parents while the kids are fully virtual.
Thank you, Megan. We usually don't answer questions in these, but is there anybody from the administration who would like to either follow up with her or answer something tonight?
Mr. Weathers?
You got it. I can, I would be glad to follow up and have a conversation. We do have a standardized protocol that's a little more flexible, but I'd like to speak with, if, if you want to contact my office in the morning, I'd be glad to talk to you by phone and we can get, I can get more details about what you're speaking to.
And then we can get it posted for everybody.
Yeah, we can post it, just because it, it depends on, like, I need more information, I guess.
Okay, I'll send you an email and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's Neil Weathers that's speaking up, the Assistant Superintendent. And any other people who want to speak during public comment? Jaime, I didn't like to cut you off before. Is there something you'd like to say before?
My bad.
Go right ahead.
Okay, just wanted to say, you know, the whole system as we know it, the educational system is designed to be in-person. Okay, there's no doubt about it. You know, everybody's been trained, kids are used to it. It's part of our cultural fabric. But given the circumstances right now, I really think that we should give it a lot of thought to the public health. Okay, I do believe maybe only high school, maybe elementary could be in-person. But there has to be an action taken, you know, that would keep us from making it worse. Once one, two, three, four students are, you know, get sick with it, they're going to pass it on. And, uh, the, the way I see it, the way things are going, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. And the way I see it too, is going to get even worse than it is right now. And I do understand what the teachers say, I myself pitch to, and I prefer to do it in person. But it's just given the circumstances. Think about public health and think a little about it. You know, this is just temporary. It's just getting by while we can come back, okay? Ensure that it doesn't spread in a manner in which then the whole thing is going to be stopped. That's, that's just my thought, my personal view. And I understand the views that those have preferred in person. As I said, the whole system is designed for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jaime. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:47.
One more second.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Have a safe Thanksgiving.
Stay safe.
Don't go, don't be crazy.
So they don't have to close down permanently.
Right, don't be crazy.
Be safe.
Happy Thanksgiving. Good night.
Good night.
Ooh. Who's bait a fish? Look. Get up.